Now have plenty of chairs.
So glad that Emily, Donnie and Phil in the front row. Norma Jean have chairs now.
All right, thank you all for coming. We're now called the City Council Meeting to order, seven, what time is it, seven twenty-two, July twenty-sixth, let the record show. I'd like to start with invocation, pledge of allegiance, if you could please rise. Oh Heavenly Father, we ask that you protect our city, its citizens and our visitors as we enter the heart of our hurricane season. We thank you for the families and friends who have visited us, with us this year, watch over them as they return home. Please Lord, help those in Norway whose way of life has been adversely affected so dramatically with terrorism. Please keep safe all those that are in our service. We cherish them all, whether they are serving our country, our state, or serving our city. But raising your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marie, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Berger.
Here.
Councilmember Vitale.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Right.
Councilmember Depp.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Pean.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Who is it?
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Carman.
Second.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
And Attorney Howard.
Here.
Thank you all. Uh, next item on our agenda is the reading of the Journal of Previous Meetings. You have a public hearing minutes from June twenty-eighth, as well as the regular meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Seconded, any direct, any corrections, deletions, omissions unheard? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're up to citizens comments. Before we open it up formally, I have two that I'd like to bring forward, actually three. First of all, uh, for those of you who aren't aware, on August fourth, Operation Aronar Charleston will have a, a gathering at the Rec Center, uh, I believe it's at six o'clock. And this will be to, uh, pull together the volunteer teams to work with the military and their families that are being repositioned back to the United States. Uh, the community, uh, the greater community of Charleston, but in particular the community on Isla Palms are going to be making rental properties available to, uh, returning veterans and their families for a brief stay to reconnect, uh, military service personnel with their families, uh, while they're here on the island for a time during the off-season. And, uh, this is a program that's been working extremely well in Hilton Head and is frankly moving out and we're going to be the next, uh, chapter, if you will, uh, and it will be quite successful, I'm fairly certain. And on the fourth, we're gathering up volunteers. The volunteers will be the people that meet the families as they arrive on the island and work them through their registration pro- process and, uh, turn them over to the unit they're going to be staying at wherever it is on the island and then, uh, giving them whatever coupons and discounts and whatever else that the program can pull together, uh, which is in the underway now. So we're looking for volunteers to be part of the greeting committees and, uh, teams and so, uh, that's going to be formulated on the fourth of August and I hope a number of people have, uh, time and then energy and willing to do this, it should be quite a program. Citadel is deeply involved in trying to help coordinate this as well, so, uh, I look for you on the fourth. Uh, next item of business, we have before us a resolution to approve and support the FY twelve Carta budget. So I'm going to ask the administrator to, I know she's geared up for this, to read the resolution. And then before she's finished, when she's done with the resolution, Christine Wilkinson is here, I know she's back here at the corner. She's, uh, the new head of Carta that's, uh, come forward today, so if we have any questions on the budget details or anything else, she'll be happy to explain it all to us in excruciating detail, I'm sorry. Please.
Resolution by City Council of the City of Isla Palms, South Carolina approving and supporting the draft fiscal year 2012 budget for Charleston Area Regional Transportation Authority Carta. It is resolved by the City Council for the City of Isla Palms, South Carolina, that whereas the service provided by the Charleston Area Regional Transportation Authority Carta is essential to the residents and visitors of the city and Charleston area, and whereas the Carta mission is to provide quality, affordable, public transportation which links people, jobs and communities in the growing metropolitan area in which we live and work, and whereas Carta has presented a draft budget for the budget year beginning October first, 2011, and whereas in order to comply with state laws governing regional transportation authorities, the budget is submitted to the City of Isla Palms, which is a part of Carta. Now therefore be it resolved that City Council in meeting duly assembled accepts and supports the draft Carta budget for FY 2012 as presented, passed and approved by the City Council for the City of Isla Palms, South Carolina on the twenty-sixth day of July, 2011. Richard F. Cronin, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? I know she's waiting, waiting for all your questions.
I just have one question.
Please.
Councilmember Vitale, did you go over this budget with a fine tooth comb?
Certainly did.
I thought so, thank you.
Well, uh, I, I'm not sure what the rest of council thinks. I think Carta is an asset to the greater Charleston area. Hopefully it can become a greater asset to this community, uh, that is now, uh, very limited, uh, on this island, uh, and we're hoping that it will increase. I know Marty's working with you and your team to try and make that happen, uh, so I'm pleased that, uh, we're getting on with this, so. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Well done. You can move on to the next, uh, pending. Uh, still under citizens comment, I'd like to acknowledge and recognize Ashley Prentice who's going to make a brief, uh, presentation to us.
Well, thank you for having me this evening and, um, my name is Ashley Prentice and I'm a member of Girl Scout Troop 449 and I'm currently working on my gold award. And the gold award is the highest achievement a girl can reach in scouting and it involves a prior service project to be completed, as well as another that is to examine a community issue and provide long-lasting sustainability. And since I grew up on the island, I've noticed the lack of education about the sand dunes and the sea oats, especially around beach access paths. And many tourists, as well as community members, do not realize the importance of the dune environment. Not only do they protect homes, prevent erosion, but provide habitats for many plants and animals. So for my service project, I would like to build two benches on two different Isla Palms beach paths with educational plaques. And I've looked at and considered First, Second and Sixth Avenue as possible locations. So I'm here today to propose my project and ask for approval for two places. I've also have pictures and, um, diagrams of the benches with exact size measurements, as well as satellite views from Google Maps of where the benches would be placed on the paths. And I believe that they would not only serve as educational outreaches for those that are unaware, but would provide a place to rest and enjoy the beauty of the beach. As for maintenance and upkeep of the benches, I'm going to propose and adopt a bench program to younger Girl Scouts so that my project's impact may not just continue on, but also so someone is always looking after the benches. And I appreciate you letting me come talk this evening and will be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Ashley presented to the Public Works Committee and I would ask council to take lead, if I could make a motion that we, we approve her project. Uh, it was unanimously approved by the, uh, Public Works Committee in our meeting and asked her to come here and she's done a very fine job in presenting it and I think it's a, a very worthwhile project. We've, I think we have a couple similar benches already on the island and this is just continuing on that tradition to, uh, keep our scouts in good working order.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion seconded. Um, and I'm holding these, so these guys haven't had their hands, I'm sorry. Uh, what is, what secures the benches or are they just, just by weight or do you have a foundation?
Yeah, they'll be concrete.
They have proposed holders and then concrete.
Okay.
Yes.
So they'll be concrete to hold there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Well, I, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to lobby for sixth, since that's the bench I would do.
Requisition for one.
You can negotiate later, I guess.
And I would like to mention that not only is this a, a good project, very good presentation.
Thank you.
It's nice to see someone your age that can present before a public body and use components.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Very nice. All right, any other points to do?
Just, are you doing some maintenance on somebody else's project occasionally, similar to this?
Well, we check to last, I mean, we visit the benches occasionally and we have been checking up on them, so, yes, sir.
Somebody like your brother or something?
Possibly.
All right, no other, all right, enough barbs. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Get your benches, negotiate with Barb on.
Certain boxes of cookies, maybe.
Thank you.
These are Girl Scouts.
Very nice. We're still in citizens comment, so I'm happy to entertain anyone else who'd like to speak. Diane, please.
I did sign up.
Yes.
Yeah, I told him.
She told me twice.
Twice?
I know, I know.
I'm Diane Ultorick. I reside at fifteen Ocean Park Court. And I feel somewhat intimidated after that wonderful presentation by that young lady, but I'm here to, uh, offer a concept that I think would be beneficial, uh, for our citizens and our community and, uh, would have a very humane and serviceable effect. We, uh, my team and I have been, uh, cooking for the last several months for people with short-term critical needs. Marie can attest to that. And, um, in that capacity, some people have become aware of that and I had a call about six weeks ago from one of our citizens who needed a, had a use or a need for a wheelchair for a visiting friend. And she thought in my capacity of seeing sick people on a short-term basis that there might be one that I could offer to her and I had to tell her no. So this idea tonight is as a result of that. It's something I've thought about for years. Norma Jean may remember fifteen years ago, I approached her about it, but, um, I call it a loan closet for, um, medical devices that are needed on a short-term basis, like canes, crutches, walkers, even a couple of wheelchairs. And I call it a closet because that's what it would be and it would operate like a library. You sign out and you, uh, an item and you sign in. And, um, this, I think, um, there is a need for it because not everything is covered by insurance and I know already you're thinking of the L-word, that L-I-A-B-I-L-I-T-Y word. But I would conjecture that perhaps some kind of statement of, um, hold harmless, uh, might, um, neutralize that problem. Anyway, I would like to leave you with the idea of maybe thinking about this and I would be very happy to be the point person. I think with our new remodeled facilities and the, uh, public safety building that surely there's a little utility closet that's maybe four by six, I would be happy to be the person responsible to seek donated items from people that no longer need them and, you know, hold the key to the closet, take the calls, sign them out and sign them in. So I, I want to thank you for hearing me out on this and I want to thank you for the service you provide our citizens, not only you, you councilmembers, but also our staff. I think you all do a wonderful job and I'm so happy that you represent us as well as you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Call me if you have any questions.
I had three healthy boys, but they did need crutches at one time, so I had three sets of nice crutches. Paid for.
I know, but there's one other community where they have done this successfully.
Very good. Any other citizens wish to address council at this time? None seen, okay, we'll move on. At this point, I'd like to reorder the agenda and if I could have a motion to move items eight, B and C forward and deal with them right now, please.
Some move, dear.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, thank you very much. As you probably are aware, items for the public, items eight, B and C are ordinances two thousand eleven dash eight and two thousand eleven dash nine. I'd like to make a motion in lieu of second reading that we defer action on these at this time until we get further into the tire parking initiative in particular.
Second. Please and thank you.
All right, I won't have to explain any further. Okay. Any other discussions? None heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fine. That'll move forward and, uh, just on that subject, I know Linda's started, uh, following up our, our request to seek, uh, technical support to work with ourselves and work with planning so that we have, uh, some consultant or engineering support on anything we do in the future on the total pilots, uh, planning, uh, for parking activities, so that process is underway. So, moving back to our agenda, I'm going to deal with the Ways and Means Committee report, which, uh, did you get a call, Douglas? Is, is now the time? All right, um, we met Ways and Means, uh, last Tuesday, five forty-five on the nineteenth. We had a preliminary year-end financial report from the, uh, our treasurer and she is confident that when the books finally close that our revenue budget will be met or exceeded. That's very good news. We have a few payments, uh, yet to be received that will record in last year's fiscal, uh, year. So our budget will, on revenues will be, will be met and our general expenditures are presently four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars below budget. So, uh, all things are good on the general fund and, and that's to the credit of Linda, the staff and every department head, uh, involved. It's, uh, it's a twelve-month labor, not just a one-month labor. Um, every day, these folks are, uh, trying to make sure they spend the money as wisely as they can and I'm glad that we're under budget, which will lead us to the opportunity later as we get through the auditing cycle to, to make a council decision on what to do with the, uh, with the additional funds that we have, whether we leave them in general funds or move to capital projects or, uh, or do something else with it. Uh, in addition, we, uh, presently we have thirty-seven percent of our annual general fund expenses in the bank. Uh, if you may recall, our objective is to have thirty percent, uh, funds on hand at the end of the fiscal year, so having thirty-seven percent is, is an excellent position, a very healthy position for the city to be in. On our tourism schedules, uh, for the month, our municipal accommodations fee, uh, continues to, to continue on very strong. We're still nineteen percent over a year-to-date prior year, so for the full year of FY eleven, we've hit by nineteen percent, which is a fairly large number, if you haven't figured that out. So that's to the credit of all. Uh, hospitality tax, which we collect to food and beverage on the island is twelve percent ahead of prior year. We've received no state accommodations tax at this reporting time, but I expect that will be a, uh, very healthy June quarter when they finally, uh, do the calculation and render it to us, so I'm looking forward to good results in all our tourism schedules. And that more will be developed as we get through the actual closing to the, final closing to the books. Our project schedules were reviewed, everything is in order. We had a long discussion on the remedial focused erosion permit. The permit, uh, agencies have come back to us, have proposed, uh, a lot of monitoring, a lot of biological activities, uh, a lot more than we anticipated, therefore a lot more monies would be spent in that initiative. Uh, council was made aware of the potential there, although we had our engineering, uh, brethren coastal science engineering with us and they believe that they'll be able to negotiate some of those monitoring, uh, requests down, probably not eliminate them unfortunately, although there is one, we are going to work hard to eliminate. They want us to do a lighting survey for nighttime lights before and after the project. So, we're these people that bet, I haven't got a clue, but if they hadn't been on our island, uh, we already do all that stuff, so. So we have, uh, some trepidation going forward, depending on how we, uh, work our way through with these agencies on, on negotiating the monitoring and the cost for all of that, but we released the staff and the, uh, our engineering team to continue and get the permit in order and, uh, we'll see what we can do with it after we've got it in hand. Before us tonight, we have a recommendation to award a contract to Carolina Composites LLC in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. This is under the state contract pricing. It's for one pioneer, one nine-seven boat, motor and trailer, to be funded equally from state and municipal accommodations tax as part of the FY twelve capital budget. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and seconded. We have a discussion, this is replacing the twenty, what is it, twenty-two-year-old boat that, uh, we have held together with duct tape, I believe, at least the engine, uh, and would give the fire department a boat that would last hopefully as long, so. Michael.
Mayor, thank you. Um, during our Ways and Means, I, um, did not support this, um, initiative. We absolutely positively need a new boat. Uh, the boat, um, the chief and the fire, uh, team have really kept it together well and have done a great job with it, but however, I feel forty thousand dollars for this boat, we only have one state contract on this boat and, um, I just feel that, you know, we should have put this, uh, boat up for a competitive bid and, uh, see if we can get a, get a better deal. I mean, I think if it was a competitive deal, there could be an opportunity for us to save several thousand dollars with this. And, um, you know, one thing that was said during the meeting was, you know, we put up police cars where our state competitive bid. Uh, there's a big difference between police cars which come off an assembly line and just allocated a different, because they're same cars that are being built for communities across the country, but, uh, this is a custom-made boat we're talking about. And, uh, with that, I really feel it would be beneficial to the city to have bids and we can always go back to the state contract if the bids that we put out did not come in satisfactory or lower than the state bid, so. Uh, I'd like to see, uh, council defer this and let it go up to bid before, um, we, uh, you know, spend this money and make sure we're getting the best deal possible.
Okay, any other comments?
Is that a motion?
I didn't hear a motion.
Oh.
Well, I didn't make it a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and seconded. This is a motion to defer?
Mayor. I think based on events that transpired, last week, we, we've seen the need to have a, a fully operational boat and a boat that is of commercial quality and reliable boat. State contract is exactly what it is. It's a state contract. The state has gone out and solicited bids from boat manufacturers to manufacture a boat to their specifications, which primarily is for DNR. We brought down the horsepower on this boat, so, so we are customizing it to our needs. We're not going to be chasing people in these boats, we're going to be doing rescue operations. We've gotten twenty-plus years out of the boat that we currently have. We have a chance to get a commercial quality boat at the state contract price, which has been put out for an RFP and has been bid on and this is a company that won the bid. I don't think we need to wait, I think we need to go ahead and get this boat right now.
Okay. We have a motion to defer? Any other comments? All in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. A motion to defer is defeated, so we have on the floor, motion to award a contract to Carolina Composites LLC. Any further discussion?
I will one more time, Mr. Mayor, I'm at, it keeps getting brought up that this is compared to the, um, the state bid on a DNR, um, boat. You know, like I've mentioned before, DNR couldn't make their budget last year and had to go out and buy a used boat to make it work. Um, and they're doing just well with the agents that I have talked to. And I just, and that's, I, you know, that's just one of the things we need to do, is look down that road as well. I didn't, I didn't support this bu- purchase in the, in the budget session and I didn't support it last week in Ways and Means and it's still, it's, I think it's a, a good start.
Okay. Comments?
Um, I'd just like to, you know, we look at the state and the state makes decisions that sometimes we don't always agree with. Uh, you, you know, they've taken money away from municipalities, they've done different things, so to go in there blindly and say a custom-made boat and this is the best deal we can possibly get, I'm, you know, I'd be comfortable if we had other prices. I mean, I, I don't just walk in and buy a car and the dealer says, hey, this is what it's going to cost and that's it. I shop around and try to get the best prices and I think we have an obligation to our taxpayers to try to, uh, see if we can save additional money on this.
Okay, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
None. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on, we had before us, and I'll make it in form of motion, award of a contract to Safe Industries in the amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents. This is again state contract pricing for air packs and accessories to be included in the FY twelve budget. This, of course, is for our fire department. I have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion on the air packs and accessories? None heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Thank you. Motion carries. In our discussion, we had, we're notified of changes in the Comcast billing rates. I think we must get those every month. Significant number. And we further moved, uh, Councilman Duffy made a motion and we have tasked the staff, as I indicated earlier, to hire a consultant to develop an overall parking, work with our, ourselves, work with planning commission to, uh, to be a professional consultant to help us in the overall pla- parking, uh, initiative that we have underway that we heard so much about earlier today, so. That's a report from Ways and Means. Any questions? None heard, moving on. Public Safety, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Wednesday, July thirteenth. First order of business was a consideration of title changes in the fire department and this would change the captain's title to battalion chief and lieutenant's title to captain. This would not involve any salary changes at all. This is to become more in line, or in line with what the rest of Charleston County does as we would be going to the consolidated dispatch system. I believe that groundbreaking ceremony was today. We're, according to Chief Buchanan, that facility won't be ready probably until, uh, two thousand thirteen is when we would go on and probably we'd go on at the same time as, uh, Mount Pleasant and Solomons Island. And, and we're monitoring the consolidated dispatch now. You've probably all read about what happened at Folly Beach. Uh, our chiefs are monitoring this and we'll continue to monitor and, and make sure that things are going well and that they're doing the things that our chiefs suggest they do prior to us going online with them. We just approved the two contracts in excess of ten thousand dollars. Talked a little bit about the departmental reports. Uh, for the fire department, had a couple of people stuck in elevators, had a structure fire on Morgan Place Drive that, uh, involved mutual aid from Solomons Island and Mount Pleasant. Had a stranded rotor with severe lacerations to his feet and, and this is for the month of June, I'm sorry. And we are continuing to monitor the EMS response time. Chief Buchanan is, is actually part of the fire report, but did mention that in the near future, the city will move onto the Charleston County syst- dispatch system software, which will enable us to more closely monitor EMS response time. The fire inspector performed sixteen inspections and found only one violation. This is a good indication of what this program is doing and that we used to make a fire inspection and find several violations. He's doing his, this is a relatively new job title, new program, uh, on a continuing basis, so we're making an impact on that. Did sixty hydrant inspections. All career personnel completed water rescue training. Uh, we're still experiencing some difficulties with county digital system. Hopefully, that tower is going to be going up soon and these problems will go away.
Scheduled for the fall?
It is scheduled for the fall. Moving on to the police department. Chief Buchanan reported the common Craigslist scam has reappeared. People are selling things on Craigslist. The person will contact you and say he wants to buy, send you a check and the check ends up being more than the item costs. So then they contact you and say, well, just go ahead and check me, send me a check back for that difference and don't be fooled by that. Make sure you, whatever you do is totally up and up. Make sure whatever you do is totally up and up. Telecommunicators received a total of 4,778 calls, which is an increase of 5% over last year in June. Of that total, 3,660 calls were the police department. Year-to-date, the police department's calls have increased 16%. For this period, 240 traffic stops were made that resulted in 69 citations. Due to the emphasis on activities at Front Beach, we had a little more overtime in June. Of the 17 noise ordinance complaints, officers wrote two citations. Remaining 15 complaints were to be unfounded, were found to be unfounded, or they were issued warnings. Under miscellaneous business, Captain Caldwell, that's where he attended the meeting, to present the city via the Public Safety Committee, the police department's fourth national accreditation certificate. This is a three-year process whereby 464 standards are measured. In order to receive this certification, we have to comply with 80% of those. Isle Palms complied with 88 to 89%. And of the 267 state and local agencies in South Carolina, approximately 35 to 38 are accredited. We're one of that small percentage. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Public Safety? None heard. Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works met on Wednesday, July 6, 2011, 4:00 p.m. All members were in attendance, and our first order of business was the presentation that we all had from Ms. Ashley Prentice. And as everybody knows, we now have approved her bench project. I think I can speak well for the committee, that we wish her well. She's a very poised young lady, and we had a wonderful visit with her at the committee as she described her project in detail with us, and we wish her well with her project and her future. Moving on to the rest of the business, Director Pitts wanted to thank all the residents of the island for their efforts in cleaning up the beach after our July 4 weekend. It was very helpful to him and his crew to get our beach back in order in such short time, and so he just commented on that.
Grandpa Pitts.
Oh, that's right. And for anybody that wants to know, that's Grandpa Pitts. That's his first grandchild this week.
Oliver Bodie.
Moved on to, oh, and also for everybody to note, Donnie finished the year under budget for his maintenance of his equipment, and we look forward to maybe being able to do that again next year. We want to thank you, and I thank you all the residents too, for the hard work that you put in to make that happen. We discussed the drainage projects. The 53rd to 57th project is going on. We, as everybody knows, we had some change orders that we discussed the last council meeting, and ED uses in the process of implementing those and moving the electrical boxes to continue on. And we anticipate a mid-August finish of that drainage project. And on the news, ED's also finished their ditch maintenance, the first year of their ditch maintenance project. Other than that, just want to let everybody know that we've been recognized as the cleanest beach in South Carolina.
Thank you very much.
Our next.
Just told the administrator, I went down to 53rd today, this morning, after all the rain last night. It's dry.
Yes.
It's working. So, it's either sitting in the pipe or made all the way through.
There's a big hole somewhere.
The road was dry for a time, a long time.
And committee's taking the month of August off, and our next meeting will be Wednesday, September 7th to 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, the Recreation Committee did not meet. Personnel Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Committee meeting was held Tuesday, July 12, 2011. Present were Councilmembers Vitelli, Peening, and Chair Thomas, City Administrator Tucker, Assistant to the Administrator Zubin, and City Clerk Copeland. Press was publicly, and public were duly informed. Minutes of the previous meeting were unanimously approved. There were no citizens' comments and no new business. The bulk of the meeting was spent discussing the updating of the Assistant to the Administrator's job description. There was really no action taken, and I'm sure we'll be discussing this again in the future. There was no business, new business. And lastly, the safety, the safety sweepstakes winners are General Government Laura McKella, Police Department Wellesley, I think it's Funch, Fire Department Manus Giddens, and the Public Works is Joseph Akram. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, August 9th at 5:45.
Very good. Any questions for Personnel? None heard. Okay. Real Property Committee, please.
I'm sorry. Did we skip our committee?
They didn't.
They didn't have any, okay, that's right. Thinking of the rotation here. Sorry, folks. Real Property Committee met on July 8 at 8:30 a.m. All members of the committee were present. Highlights of the meeting, number one, was city tenants are fairly crowded. There was one that was somewhat late, but it was told that was on schedule, so Linda, are we on target?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. All right. One thing to make note, the Marina outpost, the manager, Brian, has made a statement that he's concerned about the level of business at the store and may be coming back to the city to talk about a possible renegotiation of our lease with that. The beach restoration is a big thing moving on. We are working on that. One of the things which the mayor has alluded to is that after our meeting, new information came out, which was discussed in Ways and Means, which basically the restrictions put on by the Army Corps of Engineers, or I mean, DHEC, I mean, has been, could be very costly, and it's going to take a lot of work to negotiate that to be cost-effective for the city. So, that's an ongoing challenge for us. Another key item is dredging. We've been working with the Army Corps of Engineer and Jack Walker, our consultant, and working on as far as moving through a final hurdle of getting the consent instruments put together for that. On new business, discussion about the financial status of the Front Beach parking lots. Obviously, we tied into this parking program that we've been talking about for island-wide. City lots have been busy. In fact, Bill Schupp has indicated that he's getting a number of requests from people who have annual passes from the county lot coming to the city lot on weekends because the county lot is full and requesting access to our lot. And for some reason, Bill won't take that pass, and so.
Good.
Anyway, but, you know, we're seeing definite more increase, and we did shut down 4th of July weekend, that Sunday, the lot was full before noon. As everyone knows, the island was quite full for that weekend. One thing that was discussed is working with the city administrator and Bill Schupp, finding additional signage to try to drive people from off Palm and from the neighborhoods into the parking lots, and we think we can do a better job with that. And that's ongoing, where we're going to hopefully sign that and, you know, again, bring that traffic into the city and keep the cars and visitors out of the neighborhoods. There will be no meeting in August, and the next meeting is set up for September 8 at 8:30 a.m.
Very good. Any questions for Real Property? Moving on, you have minutes from the combination stacks, Planning Commission, and Board of Zoning Appeals. Any questions on those? Down to bills already in your possession. We have before us, second reading on 2011-08. I'm going to ask the administrator to walk us through the changes that have been made.
To speak globally first about the ordinance, I would say that this, the changes to this ordinance started out for the purpose of preventing the situation of the fire department being called out to an alarm that is either a malfunction or a false alarm, and the key holder failing to respond within a reasonable length of time. And this would put the fire crews in a position to have to wait for, you know, as many as several hours, or at least one unit and one personnel wait for several hours until a key holder arrives. So, the idea was to put in a provision that indicated that people need to respond, the key holders need to respond within a reasonable amount of time, or be subject to being fined. And so, the revisions that have been made since the first reading include making sure that we have deleted automated dialing systems that have to do with calls directly into 911, rather than from the alarm companies. And then also, we made a change per Chief Buchanan's suggestion that is new to council for this reading, and that is that there are alarm systems now on some construction trailers. And we did not have any dialogue in the ordinance, in the draft that you had for first reading, that included mentioning alarms on construction trailers. It basically was homes, businesses, and descriptions like that. So, those are the changes that have been made. The versions and the amendments that you have before you today do not include dealing with the problem identified by Dr. Carrick, who's in the audience out there, because we are still trying to come up with the appropriate solution to that problem. It's still out there, something that we're working on as a staff between the police department and the fire department, and my department, working with Sterling. But we felt like we needed to move forward with the provisions concerning the non-response issue, so that we could have a punitive provision for situations where alarms occur and the fire department responds, and then the key holder doesn't show up. So, we asked council to move forward with this, and we will come back to you with the concerns that were expressed by Dr. Carrick, and the occasion where someone might install an alarm themselves, and for that reason, maybe not be aware of the city's ordinance, and then an alarm goes off, and the first awareness that they have is when they receive a ticket. And while that might get dismissed when they come to court and they've gotten their alarm permit, his request was that there ought to be some mechanism to prevent that. So, we're still working on that aspect.
So, that's part of the Public Safety Committee's agenda. So, we have before us, second reading ordinance, 2004, 2011, dash four, amending Title VII. I have a motion to.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, suspend reading.
And that would be with the amendments that have been made.
With the amendments.
Since first reading.
Correct. That's what Marty said.
That's what he said. I heard him.
Any further discussion on this?
What is the punitive, or I meant, for violation of this right now?
Now or in the future?
Right now.
I believe it is $100 the first time and $200 afterwards, if you're a repeat offender.
That's what it's going to.
Or that's what it's going to. No, I meant right now.
Oh.
As it reads, right, because I don't have the original.
It's 50.
50.
Is it 50 right now?
50 and 100.
And that's just for violation? Now, is there, is it a separate violation for if you're not responding with it, or is it just? I mean, if you're not responding within 30 minutes of the call, then, I mean, it's just, whenever this, whenever there's a fire alarm, basically, it's going to be $100.
If you do not have a permit, there is a, that is a violation.
Correct.
And if you do not respond, that is also a violation.
Correct.
So, are you asking, is that two violations?
No, I know that is two violations. But as for the, right now, for the false alarm, because the non-respondent is a new thing to this ordinance.
That's correct.
Within 30 minutes. That's new. That's what's been amended. So, okay. So, what we have now, so it's not, it's just basically if you have to respond within 30 minutes of the call. And, no, I'm saying, if somebody still doesn't respond within 30 minutes of the call, that's still, the violation doesn't go up, it's just.
Increase over time? Is that what that is?
Well, it's no different than what we had.
It becomes exponential.
Why, why? I just, yeah, you're not penalized by the minute, but. All I'm saying is, I mean, there's no difference between this ordinance and what we already have in the books, except for the 30-minute timeframe, which.
That's correct.
If I could probably answer that, I think what's happening is, you know, I'll call it an incentive, rather than, but we're getting false alarms now. Calling the people that need to be called, and in some cases, those folks don't show up. If it's a burglar alarm, it's pretty easy to determine whether there's someone in the house or not, if they can see in the building at all. If it's a fire alarm, they don't know it's a false alarm, so the fire department is spending personnel's time to stay there and set a fire watch until someone responds and can actually reset the alarm. That's the reason we know that.
Okay.
You're correct, that that is the new component.
Right. Okay. But there's still no, nothing forcing them to show up within 30 minutes, really.
Right. Nothing, I mean.
Okay.
If they're in Arnsburg, they may never.
Right.
They'll pay the fine.
Doesn't necessarily solve the problem.
We'll see.
What constitutes a response? Someone showing up?
Key holder showing up.
In 30 minutes.
Well, it'd be nice if they'd be there sooner than 30 minutes, but.
I'm just thinking of.
Key holder can be your neighbor.
Right.
It doesn't have to be the owner.
Okay. The next question is, how will this be communicated to those that have alarms? Through the next application process?
We have a, we have a process in place already, and yes, we can use that information to disseminate the passage of this ordinance.
I mean, people won't know next month or the following month until the cycle comes back around to re-register. Isn't that an annual, that's an annual process, right?
It is, but we have, you know, we have their contact information.
Okay, so your staff will be contacting those holders.
Okay. We have a motion? Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no. Thank you. All right. The only other item I want to mention under miscellaneous, I'd like to thank the fire staff for responding as well as you did for the tragedy that happened off of Dewey's there and the subsequent recovery there. They were prompt and professional, and the police supported them in every way, and of course, the county came and, you know, all the other assets. But it was a difficult time for the staff, but they responded and acted professionally throughout the entire time period, so please tender my acceptance and the rest of council for a job well done to the entire staff. Difficult time. And the only other thing, in case you haven't heard, you know, we did have a bike accident on the connector Sunday. Car, bike, come together.
That was not early morning.
Not good. Car. Unfortunately, this is a case where the car was stationary and the biker runs into the car.
Took out the back windshield.
The biker went through the back window. So, it's unfortunate, but, you know, it's not the James Island connector scenario here, I thank God. Now you know the, now you know what happened. Anything else brought before council? Motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right.